The commissioners meeting of Rome County in Tennessee is now in session. The Honorable Chairman Shannon Hester presiding. God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee, and this honorable meeting. At this time, please remain standing for the pledge of the American flag. Afterwards, we say prayer for Commissioner Mike Hooks will say the prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let it go. Father, it's with great thanks that we bow our heads and say nothing to you. Thank you for a new life. Riley Kate, Ms. Lynn Farnham's granddaughter. Lord, we're his precious and we're thankful for life. Lord, and we continue your friend with Super Jack and his family. Lord, if you just continue your father with it. Father, the healing and father, and I know that you're capable of, Lord, and Jackson and his family, Lord, there again, we need a healing touch. Lord, now, we have lost one of our dear loved ones. Ms. Dolores Lefew. Our county attorney's mother, Lord, we pray, God, that you would just be with them through this air. Lord, send comfort, Lord, and father, comfort their hearts. Lord, but call, father, we know that you've gained an angel. Lord, now, we ask God, father, here to see them that you take, Lord, and open our minds, Lord, into the business of our county, Lord, that, father, we can discuss it, Lord, and, father, those areas that we can agree on, that we've come to stay friends, Lord, and, father, those things that needs to be done, father, for the betterment of the county, that we do that also. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, may be seated. You have a cell phone, please print it down. All right, Roe been called? First up, approved minutes of the January ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting. I hear a motion. Motion by Wilson, second by Dan, any discussion? Hearing none, call Roe. All right, motion passes. Insipidness of committee reports and correspondence, I hear a motion. Motion by Wilson, second by Dan. Mr. Wilson, nothing further. Mr. Dan, nothing further, sir. Any discussion? Call Roe. Do we have any notice of this going, Matt Clark?
We have quite a few that are actually going to be up on the screen there. If you'd like me to announce them.
Yeah, if you would announce them, please.
Tiffany Arwood, Otis Paul, Rebecca Bardell, Sherry Wilkie, Christina Bolin, Rachel Chanel, Chelsea Clark, Hannah Davidson, Diane Fitzhugh, Tammy Goddard, Linda Jackson, Susan Lively, Jaclyn Key, Celeste Mudrich, Cecilia Newman, David Nyberg, Leslie Palucci, Jennifer Pipkin, Madison Powers, Echo Reeve, Jennifer Renfro Davis, and Laura Scott.
I have a motion by Junior Henderson and a second by David Brackett. Mr. Henderson.
I appreciate your willingness, sir.
All right, Mr. Brackett. Any discussion? Call a vote. Motion passes. At this time, it's time for hearing of the delegations. So we'll limit you to three minutes. So people in the public, it's your time to address the commission and your county office. Anyone?
Hey, good evening. Justin Snow, interim president at the Rome Lights. And we're trying to get all partners tonight with just a brief update. And I'll start with the chamber. All y'all know David Lane, who's the athletics director at Rome State. And he met with our team last week to talk about the junior college basketball tournament that was when we held at Rome State March third through the seventh. So we brainstormed on different ideas how we could support our businesses. So we're going to meet and put those into action and do everything we can to help promote our businesses during this event because there's going to be lots of teams, coaches, parents, and it's a great opportunity for us. So I brought some flyers if you want to pass these around. As far as ECD, it's keeping me, keeping me pretty busy. There's a lot of good things going on. The spec building on Jones Road is still in construction, due to be completed in July, and it's doing what it's supposed to do. We have two prominent companies that are interested in the building that we're in negotiations with. And so hopefully, we can progress things forward and get to the finish line on one of these. I remain optimistic. I'm a firm believer in the saying, activity breeds new activity. That same company that purchased the Jones Road site gave me two purchase, I mean, purchase and sales agreements last week. They want to buy fifty more acres in the park to build two more three hundred thousand's worth of buildings. Last Friday, Wade, Cresswell, myself, Senator Yeager, and Mr. Fritz. That would represent those of Colmar Americas and Rockwood Industrial Park, just to get an update on their project, get a tour of the site. I've been working with them probably the past twelve to eighteen months. They're looking to invest hundreds of millions of dollars into our community. So we just met, they're in the process of ramping their employment up to seventy-five. And so we had all of our local support there to offer all the support going forward, so. It's Colmar Americas, but the sister company that's in the park is American Green Fuels Rockwood LLC.
They're a coal, an alcohol business.
A former co-con power business. Wood chips for diesel fuel, so it would be a great project for our community, and we're going to offer every bit of support we can to keep it moving forward. I'll be brief, and we'll skip over to workforce development. Rome County Schools Combined Career Day at Hermit High School on March the thirtieth from eight-thirty to forty-five. There'll be over, it's about fifteen-hundred-and-twenty-eight high school and middle schoolers that'll participate in that job fair. Last thing I'll mention, we never want to lose a company in the county or see a reduction in workforce, but this Thursday, the Rome Lights has partnered with ATRA for a job fair at Alba Health from ten to one. We're jumping in to try to help mitigate that situation the best we can. And then last week, Befesa and Zink announced a reduction in their job force. So immediately, I reached out, partnered with ATRA. We've got a job fair scheduled at the Rockwood Community Center on March eighth from ten to two. And Representative Fritz has already reached out and is partnering with the Department of Labor and their rapid response team for additional resources in unemployment claims. Questions? Comments? Thank you.
All right, next, state your name and the address, please.
Good evening, my name is April Hamilton, and I live on Fair Springs Road. I am here tonight for some of you, or you may remember me from April of last year, where I came and asked to use the parking lot to host our spring fling. So I am back again this year to ask permission to do so. I started here first this year after the deal I went through with city council and all that. So I am requesting to utilize the parking lot again on May thirteenth of this year. And what we do is, for those of you that are new, we put together events within the city of Kingston and some outside, but we stay within our county. And our events, their vendor fees go to provide Christmas for children. So this year, I don't know how many of you were able to see it, but we gave Christmas to over a thousand kids free to the community. We're really excited. We have Ray County, Cumberland County, Knox County. We have some kids from Maryland who even come and visit just because they wanted to see what we had put together. So we're asking permission again, like I said, just to utilize the parking lot. I will ask Mr. Lefew required last year, I'll do the same this year with the specially big insurance. I think I met everyone's required goals and expectations last year, and it was a blessing.
Mr. Lefew, I believe last year we did a voice vote while she was present, so.
That's fine.
At this time, all of the favor.
You need to, probably need a motion and a second.
Well, no, all right. All right, I have a motion and a second, thank you. All right, all of the favor?
Aye.
All of the opposed?
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, next. Anyone else to discuss the call with the commission? All right, hearing none, we'll go to the county attorney to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Hook, through prayer. I have a few things to report. On Friday, Mr. Koper and I have our property maintenance court. We have a lot of cases scheduled that day. I think we'll be there a while on Friday. You had directed me last meeting to submit a letter to LCUB and Watts Bar Utility District and the Industrial Board concerning the transfer of the utilities in the park. That letter went out on January thirty-one. There's a copy of it in your correspondences. To date, I have not heard from anyone except Mr. Snow, but I will report next month as to whether these folks have responded to me and whether we have a meeting scheduled. The only other thing that I have to talk about, you have a resolution two twenty-three zero eight on your agenda concerning quit claiming a portion of short street after its abandonment. My suggestion to you is that if we are going to quit claiming that to someone, the person who's going to get it, submit to us a survey so we can do a legal description of the property because looking at that map, there's really no way I can concoct a description to describe where this part of the road lies. We have some resolutions on the agenda tonight where we're rescinding some previous abandonments and quit claims and redoing them because there was no survey description. The description that was provided to us was inaccurate. The GIS department for the county caught it when we reported the deed. I would strongly advise you from here on out to require surveys on these abandonments so we don't have that problem. And that, Mr. Chairman, is the end of my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir, just, just one. Are you working with Mr. Koper on the board of commissioners?
Yes.
So I think that's going to come before us in March, is that correct?
I, I don't have any control over when it comes before you, but I have reviewed it, requested some, some changes, they made them, I've reviewed it again.
We should get a draft copy of it this week. Anything else? Thank you. Now we'll go with the county executive to report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, as, as Mr. Hook alluded to, we had a celebration of new, new birth on our staff, granddaughter Lynn Farnham's granddaughter Riley Kate Stapp born this morning. Both baby and mother doing well. And then, of course, as, as he, as Mr. Hook alluded to, we had a passing of family member of a colleague of ours, Ms. Dolores Lefew, passed away Thursday evening. Our condolences to our county attorney and prayers for him and his family. Services for Ms. Lefew are Sunday at Oak Grove Cemetery in Rockwood, two P.M. This morning, let the commission know that. Please keep both families in your prayers. I'd like to announce some staff changes. Been five months in office and working towards putting the structure in place, I believe, allowing the county executive's office to do, really, from my vision of what we're structured to do. And in, as a result of that, I have appointed Mike Beard, our, our former director of Parks and Recreation as project manager, working out of our office, working on specific projects, specifically, he's been working on some projects, we're expanding that, such as ensuring that we complete the ambulance station on Gala Hall Road, or ensuring that we complete the Spade Uterus Clinic, paid for the art money at the animal shelter, and several other projects like that. So he'll be working out of our office as project manager. So I'm also proud to announce that Josh Lenz will serve as interim director of Parks and Recreation through June thirtieth, as we work through an extended interview process and to ensure that this is something to get in, ensure getting into management is something that he wants to do, but Josh has been with the department for ten years, has done a great job, looking forward to working with him. Mike will be available to mentor and counsel him as well. Jack Jinks will be retiring on March thirty-first. Lindsay Collins is now working for the city of Kingston. And then finally, today, a new building inspector was hired who starts on two twenty-seven, and that's as a result of a position you all created based on increased revenues we had seen and increased demand that's happening in that office. One thing that we talked about in budget committee meeting is, over the last several months, we've received funds through the state as a result of opioid settlement funds related to lawsuits against pharmaceutical companies. We anticipate more funds will be distributed in the coming weeks. In response, I will be submitting a resolution to commission in March to establish an ad hoc committee, committee of professionals and officials to determine the best distribution of these funds, people who are in this business each and every day, who can help us determine what the best impact for spending these funds is. We also anticipate more funds coming down the pipe in lawsuits that, that are ongoing right now, so I think this will be an ongoing issue. What we want to do, what I want to do is put you all in the best possible position to spend this money that makes the biggest impact. This is the root cause of so many of our issues across our community. This won't be a whole lot of money to address it, but it is a good chunk to help us get started. So I'm going to be bringing you all a resolution to consider on who will be on that to help us spend those funds. Also, I am hosting a meeting for all organizations that have an economic development mission, a development mission on the Oak Ridge Reservation. The purpose is to gain alignment across all these organizations, especially where common communication is missing. It'll be February twenty-third at the East, or the Emergency Response Training Facility that, that our IDV was the developer on. So it's, it's working with all the contractors, with Pro-IT, with the local chambers, local governments, all of us who need to be communicating much better. If we're going to gain enough alignment to win projects, this is what it's going to take. So it's just an opportunity to convene and hopefully start a communication process. I want to heads up, Mr. Chairman, long-range planning committee, I'm going to recommend we do a very short-term postponement of our meeting schedule for the twenty-third because I have a meeting with the vendor that I talked about on the twenty-fourth to get a quote that I want to bring forward. So just FYI, to give you notice that we'll be reaching out to do just a couple of week postponement on that date. And then, as, as Mr. Snow mentioned a few minutes ago, we received a warrant notice on a reduction in labor of fifty workers at Befesa, which is the old Horsethe facility in Rockwood. The good news is, even though we've seen two closures or two pending closures in Rockwood, the local employers there are just chomping at the bits to get to these employees. And as a result of that, you've heard Mr. Snow say that we put together, already put together two career fairs. I don't anticipate any of these employees having difficulty finding a job. Almost everybody's hiring right now, so while it's challenging for these people to go through, we're in a good employment situation throughout the community, and I feel like it will have little overall impact on our economy. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Be glad to take any questions.
All right, any questions for the county executive? All right, hearing none, we'll go right into special orders. Special order number one, confirmation of appointment of Susan Mashad to solid waste advisory is afforded by the county executive, Wade Criswick. Got a motion by Junior Henderson, a second by Ben Gann.
Nothing further.
Mr. Gann?
Nothing further, sir.
Any discussion? Call a vote. Motion passes. Number two, confirmation appointment to Jody Fraley to fill a vacancy on the Rome County Library Board, the term will expire June thirtieth. Do I have a motion? David Brackett, Mr. Brackett. Mr. Lane?
No, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call a vote. Motion passes. Confirmation appointment to Julianne Bailey to fill a vacancy on the Rome County Library Board, the term will end June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion by Mr. Hook, second by Junior, Mr. Henderson, Mr. Hooks.
The chairman of Wailon, Mr. Sheriff.
Mr. Henderson.
I have to admit, it's president.
Any discussion? Call a vote. All right, motion passes. All right, so now we're getting into the zoning commission portion here, the zoning that we previously heard. Number one has been withdrawn, so we're going to O-two, and then just followed right by it will be O-three. What we have discussed is, do I hear a motion, Brad, for the commission? Got a motion, they got a second. Junior Henderson, motion. Mr. Gann, second. Mr. Henderson.
He's on the floor.
All right, Mr. Gann. All right, discussion.
So this is for the two separate pieces of property?
We're going to do one zoning of one, so this is O-two, and then the next will be O-three. Thank you, so. I can't. Play on, folks. Oh, let me look, the buttons got crossed or something here. All right, Mr. Goss.
But, Quinn's still here. What's the timeframe? And I should ask this earlier, and I apologize for not doing it, but what, have we given him a timeframe to make these requirements? I mean, to make compliance, or all the compliance things we've done? I mean, months or weeks? Anything at all?
It'll be more of the timeframe than months. Not, not a year. I miss.
All right, let's see, Mr. Parks.
He won't be able to open the campground area until he gets it approved, correct? Until the zoning's complete, though, what we're talking about's not open, correct, right now?
There are campers on both sites right now, but.
It is being used right now as a campground.
But here's all we're, we have told him, you're not to be able, he's not done any more work except for the road in that he shouldn't have done without the site plan approval. But he cannot bring in any new campers in there. I think he has one that he has until this gets brought up to the standards.
So if it gets voted down, will that, will you have to move that camper? Or will he still be doing it out of compliance?
If, if he, if it gets voted down, then we'll have to turn around, and that's an injunction to stop the use of property that were, um, permitted use.
All right, Mr. Parks, anything else?
No.
All right, Mr. Hooks.
Director, Mr. Chairman.
Once this work is done, will this come back before the commission? It's a conditional zoning. Will this come back before us to show that all areas are in compliance? Does that, does that make sense? Yes, it makes sense, correct?
Probably not. I mean, if, if he follows suit to the satisfaction of the planning commission, then they're going to have records that show all the conditions are met. If the planning commission determines that the conditions are not met, then it's, they're probably going to send it back to you.
So, one more question. If this camper's on the site now on property that is out of compliance, should he, should he not remove those campers until that property come in compliance? Is that for me or for you? For you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, if there are unpermitted uses on property, then you can authorize me to file a lawsuit to ask for an injunction to stop those uses. That's how you enforce your zoning, is we take it to court and get a court.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm taking into consideration some of the voices from the community. I think it speaks loudly, and I think Mr. Commissioner Henderson asked a great question, and it falls back to complaints that's down that way. I think one of the, one of the things that I'm hearing, and the question I asked was, you know, what was the solution to it? It's a solution we really can't fix as a county. I'll just be honest with you. That's a lot of money to widen that road down that way. And with the overcrowding that's down there already, it deeply concerns me that this was, this was even a litigation matter years ago and was, you know, prior to it switching owners. My gut feeling is against this going to court with already being overcrowded, I guess, is where I'm, where I'm seeing and hearing the, from the nature of calls that's probably been down there, the only thing we're going to do is increase that, is probably what I'm feeling if, if we do that. Nothing against growth, I'm absolutely for growth and putting more in there, but it also concerns me with concerns of calls that's coming in, that it would, it would only increase.
Chair recognizes, let me recognize Junior Henderson first, Mr. Henderson.
I know so.
Okay. Yeah, county executive.
Yeah, to Mr. Wilson's point, and then trying to find some clarification, as I understand the situation, because it's somewhat counterintuitive in that while it seemingly moving from agricultural to commercial zone would be one that would seem to promote growth, in this situation, it, it gives the code enforcement officer more leverage to help bring properties into compliance that would then somewhat satisfy the neighbor's complaints. Correct me if I'm going off track here, if I'm wrong here, but, so it's kind of backing into the situation. But one of the things that could help prevent it from a growth perspective or help control the growth is the site plan. So if, again, it's kind of backing into it, so by, by moving to a commercial zone, our code enforcement officer then has the authority to, to ensure that the, the properties are being used for its intended purpose and can meet somewhat the desires of the community that's down there. I don't, I'm not sure that they're ever going to be, it's going to be satisfactory because, again, we kind of have to back into this, but.
And I understand that, I believe you're opening up Pandora's box on this as well. That's my feeling.
Commissioner Wilson, to be honest with you, the biggest part of the problem really isn't these two pieces of property. The biggest part of the problem are the two that are non-performing uses. Okay? And that will be getting addressed, but like I said, we, we need to discuss that another time and another place.
Also, we anticipate a noise when it's coming to commission in March.
That is correct.
Do we have enough police officers to respond to those continuous noise noises? So that's going to be a figure.
We'll, we'll discuss.
Commissioner, let's stick with the zone of O-two for right now, then we'll address O-three next, and then continue on. All right, any other discussion on O-two? Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, what's the? If they don't comply, how much, you know, power do we have to stop it and correct it as, as a county?
Are you talking about if they don't comply with the current zoning, or if you change zoning and they don't comply?
Yeah, if we change it and they don't comply.
If they don't comply with your. If they don't comply with your conditions, then you can rescind the change, and it will go back to its current zone.
So what, what are we gonna do to, to put a little bite and sting into it to keep them from not complying? I mean, is there any action we can take against them?
Well, if they don't comply with the conditions, if you approve this, then you can rescind the zoning change. It goes back to the original zoning, and then you would probably have me filed a suit for any unpermitted use on the property.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Chair recognizes, Mr. Parks.
The land that we're talking about, how many more campers is expected to be added? You don't have a site plan, but expectation, how many more campers are you talking?
Well, well, one of the site plans they provided us, that they're having to do some breaks on, showed sixteen slots.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, that, that's the Poggies place, uh, the other one has five slots on it. Now, there's another piece of property down there, but it's T V O eight owned property, and the only thing that can be enforced on that is the lease agreement.
All right. All right, any other questions on, uh, the property on O two, that's track, uh, twenty-five dash O one? All right, any other discussion? Call the vote. The motion failed on majority vote. All right, let's go to, uh, O three. And this is the property just right next to it, so I hear a motion. Motion by Gann, second by Brackett, Mr. Gann. Nothing, sir. Mr. Brackett.
I don't think we talked about that.
Any discussion on, uh, zoning O three? All right, hearing none, call the vote. Motion failed on majority vote. All right. Next one up is, uh, zoning O four. And this is, uh, O two, twenty-three dash O four Z, I have a motion. Mr. Brackett. Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, call the vote. Motion passes. Thirteen one. All right. So next up is old business, do we have any old business? I'm not, I'm not seeing any of the.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next one is, uh, O two, twenty-three dash O one, uh, resolution rescinding, resolution nine, twenty-two dash zero eight, uh, on September twelve, twenty twenty-two. Rome County Commission adopted resolution O two, twenty-two dash O eight, abandoned two hundred five point eight feet of roadway on Willow Drive and Kingston. I have a motion. Second, uh, Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Mr. Gann.
Nothing further, sir.
Any discussion on this? I believe this is what the county attorney was leading toward, that we need to, in the future, request surveys with, uh, G S data, or something that matches our database.
Something we can use as a property description to avoid these.
Yes, sir. All right, any discussion on this? All right, call the vote. All right, majority vote, motion passes. O two, twenty-three, O two, uh, rec- resolution authorized the abandonment of interest of property two hundred and five point eight feet of the roadway on Willow Drive and Kingston. Motion by Ben Wilson, second by Charlie Cunningham, Mr. Wilson.
Uh, Mr. Lefty, have we received the required survey on this one?
We have not received a survey, I'm okay with us using this description, because we can locate the property based on the tax map, because it just lies between two parcels, and we've already done this for these people, so.
Sure.
We probably shouldn't hold it.
I may be out of order on saying this, but is there other ones that have not, or do you feel compelled that does not meet the requirements? While we're on subject.
The ones that we've done in the past, it's been easy for me to describe the property through a deed, because I can say it's lying between two parcels, like I've done here. I mean, I think going forward, it would be better to just require surveys for them all.
But you're good with what?
I'm good with this, because you can look at the tax map and you can see where it lies, because the parcels are identified.
All right, thank you.
All right. Second one by Ms. Cunningham, Ms. Cunningham.
None.
All right.
I'll build on Mr. Lefty's point, uh, and what he said about going forward requiring that a, a survey be done. Uh, we will adopt that in practice, uh, I don't know if you, if it was something you all wanted to adopt formally in policy. Um, but he and I discussed this this afternoon, and moving forward, that's exactly what we'll do before we bring anything forward that will require survey. For a, for a property distribution.
Chair recognizes Mr. Henderson.
Who's paid, pays for the survey?
The person requesting property needs to pay for the survey.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. Majority pass. All right, next one is O two, twenty-three, O three, uh, where as to the resolution ten, twenty-two, twenty-one, Rome County Commission authorized the county executive to execute a quick claim deed releasing an abandoned portion of Willow Drive to Tim Smith and his wife, Alyssa Smith. Motion by Mr. Bale, uh, second by Mr. Wilson, Mr. Bale. Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. Motion passed. All right, uh, resolution two, O two, twenty-three, O four, uh, this is a, a deed, a resolution to authorize the county executive to execute a correction, quick claim deed, releasing the abandoned portion of Willow Drive to Tim Smith and his wife, Alyssa Smith. Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Gann, Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Mr. Gann.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. Next one is O two, twenty-three, O five, authorized the county attorney to file lawsuits regarding the properties as listed in the, uh, attached case request of violating Rome County Resolution twelve, eighteen, zero, five. Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Mr. Lehman.
No comment.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none, call the vote. All right, O two, twenty-three, uh, O six, resolution authorized the county, uh, attorney to file a lawsuit against, uh, each property owner regarding the properties that listed on the attachment. Motion. Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
Mr. Hooks.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. Airline, does anyone need to slow down any?
No, you're good, it just snagged, sorry.
Okay. O six passes. O seven, resolution authorized the county executive to sign a quick claim deed, uh, authorized the abandonment of portion of Short Street, uh, being point zero eight three, uh, miles, and authorized the abandonment of all interest in approximately point eight three, zero, eight three miles. Mr. Wilson.
It's already been discussed, nothing further.
Mr. Lehman.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Hearing none, up.
Uh, I thought there was no, uh, survey on that one, not, not what we were told earlier.
I was getting ready to say, you might want to take these out of order, because you've not abandoned Short Street yet. The resolution two, twenty-three, zero eight is the abandonment of Short Street.
We need, we need to table O eight and O seven?
No, I'd say, I think you need to take O eight up first.
All right.
You can do that.
Because you, you haven't abandoned Short Street yet, so you can't do a quick claim deed.
All right, let's, uh, entertain the motion of O two, twenty-three, zero eight, the abandonment of it. Uh, Mr. Gann, uh, any questions?
I don't think.
Mr. Henderson.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? This is O eight, uh, resolution to abandon the portion of, of property. Hearing no discussion, hearing only.
Yeah, we're on O eight.
Call the vote. All right, motion passed, now entertain O two, twenty-three, O seven, uh, county executive to sign a quick claim deed, authorize the abandonment. I hear a motion. Now here's a. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Lefty, even, I was including that in my question, so this one does not meet the criteria.
This one does not have a survey, and this one really needs a survey, because I just, this is a circle, and I can't draw a deed based on what's on the tax map.
True. So does this need to be just deferred, or?
You might, uh, want to make a motion to amend it, to make it conditioned upon, I assume it's the Warner's that are holding this?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, you might want to amend it to, uh, make it state that, uh, we'll do a quick claim deed to Morgan and Rhett Warner upon them furnishing a survey.
Well, that bypassed them having to come back to commission.
That would bypass them having to come back, yes.
So, yeah, if it's point of war, I make a motion that if they bring in the survey to the county attorney, that we, as the body, will approve this to move forward.
So you want to make a motion to amend?
I'll make a motion to amend.
O seven.
O seven.
I'll say.
All right, so I got a motion by Wilson, uh, and, uh, Mr. Gann, to amend O seven to get a, uh, survey completed.
This is only amendment, but we have a, a request to speak.
Mr. Parks.
No, something happened to the computer, just popped up.
All right, uh, on O seven, as amended.
No, this is on the amendment itself.
On the amendment itself. All right, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, call the vote. All right, majority vote, uh, then, on the O seven as amended.
We are now on O seven as amended.
All right, uh, O two, two-three, O seven, as amended, requesting a survey completion, I have a motion, I have a motion by Brackett, second by Mr. Henderson, uh, Mr. Brackett.
Mr. Henderson, nothing further.
Any discussion on O two, twenty-three, O seven as amended? Hearing none, call the vote. All right, motion passed. Then, uh, we're on nine, see, we're a little out of order there, uh, O two, twenty-three, O nine, motion amended the general fund one-on-one reflecting changes in the revenue expenditure estimates for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Motion by Wilson, second by Mr. Henderson, Mr. Wilson.
This has been through the budget committee, and this is to separate basically the wording for this resolution, which is the drug and alcohol problem that we have, uh, with the opioid settlement, where we're getting three hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two, with an estimated three hundred thousand dollars, it's being specific, pulling it aside from the T B A revenue sharing contract prisoner board, it's been put, but committed with, uh, unanimous, uh, recommendation.
All right, thank you, sir, Mr. Henderson.
Nothing said.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, call the vote. All right, majority pass, uh, O two, twenty-three, eleven, resolution amending the fire prevention and, uh, control animal fund one-two-one reflecting changes in revenue expenditure.
Revenue, yeah.
I'll take what I. Well, that's what happens when you go from eight to seven back there. But, yeah, I'm sorry, let's do a ten, amending the ambulance fund, uh, one-eighteen reflecting changes to the, uh, revenue expenditure estimates for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, Mr. Wilson.
This is their assessment or plans for using the ten care receiving contract, and, uh, the seventy-eight thousand dollars is for this year, and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for our two quarters. So that seventy-eight thousand comes out of that one-twenty is basically our assessment for using the ten here to assess back to county.
All right, Mr. Gann.
All I think I want to say is, I want to say I appreciate Mr. Wilson for being very attentive to the, uh, budget committee and being able to speak on these, during the mission.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussions? All right, hearing none, call the vote. All right, motion passed. Uh, then, uh, we're on eleven now, uh, no, fire prevention and control animal fund one-twenty-one reflecting changes, Mr. Wilson.
This has also been through the budget committee, and, uh, basically, uh, revenue increase, uh, for office supplies, plus ten thousand dollars in reserve, nothing further.
All right, Mr. Doug.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. All right, this time we're on twelve, uh, motion passed. Resolution to O two, twenty-three, twelve, amending the drug control fund one-twenty-two reflecting changes in revenue and expenditure estimates for twenty twenty-three, Mr. Wilson.
Basically, it's on a preparatory program increasing fund, nothing further.
All right, Mr. Hooks.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, call the vote. Our motion passes. Resolution O two, twenty-three, thirteen, uh, amending the general purpose school fund one forty-one reflecting changes in revenue expenditure for twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, Mr. Wilson.
This has also been through the budget committee, this is the STEM program that's, uh, coming from the state, and that money's gonna be allocated towards Cherokee Middle, uh, Midway Middle, and Brockwood Middle is where those funds will be allocated. Nothing further.
Mr. Anderson. All right, any question, any debate? Hearing none, call the vote. All right, O two, twenty-three, fifteen, resolution amending the general debt service fund one fifty-one reflecting changes in the revenue and expenditure.
Fourteen.
What is going on? When I slide it up, it's sliding three pages at a time. My thumbs are big, guys. O two, twenty-three, fourteen, a resolution commissioned for Rome County, amending the, uh, central cafeteria fund one forty-three reflecting changes in revenue for twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, fiscal year fund, Mr. Wilson.
It's also been through the budget committee, this is pretty simple, it's a cleanup.
Mr. Henderson.
Nothing further.
Any discussion? Call the vote. Motion passes. O two, twenty-three, fifteen, uh, amending the general debt fund one fifty-one reflecting changes in the revenue expenditure estimates for twenty-two, twenty-three, Mr. Wilson.
Uh, this is actually a pretty exciting one, this is where our interest rates are going up from one percent of collective rate into three point nine, and we're actually making pretty good money off this, uh, there is nothing bad to say about this, this is pretty good, and there's, there's quite a bit of money that's going in that we're gonna be making interest off, and I would like to actually defer it to Connie, if she wants to talk more explanation into this, because it's, this is our best one yet, so.
Okay, so what we have with the trustee, with the money that sits idle in our local government investment pool, we are moving that over to the United Community Bank, we're putting about twenty-five million dollars to receive a constant three point nine percent interest. If the interest rate falls, we still maintain that three point nine as long as we keep the twenty-five million dollars into that account. We can easily access it if we need to. Trustee is, uh, going to probably put another fifteen million in there, so we're looking at over a million dollars that the county will receive with just having money sitting idle in an account.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Return this to Wilson.
I am complete.
All right, Mr. Gann.
Nothing further, sir.
All right, any discussion? All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, call vote. Oh two twenty-three fifteen, pass. All right, oh two twenty-three sixteen, amending the public utility wastewater fund two oh four reflecting changes in expenditure estimates for twenty-two twenty-three fiscal year. Mr. Gann.
Infer, Mr. Wilson, please.
It's been through budgets, simple point now. Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, call vote. Twenty-three sixteen, pass. Oh two twenty-three seventeen, this is a resolution to place in surplus of certain wastewater department vehicles described below. Mr. Wilson. The motion by Wilson, second by Brackett, Mr. Wilson.
Nothing further.
All right, Mr. Brackett. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Call vote. Twenty-three seventeen passes. Oh two twenty-three eighteen, resolution authorizing county executive to apply for assistance to firefighter grants to FEMA and for Wrong County emergency services. Ms. Cunningham and Lance Duff, second, Ms. Cunningham.
Nothing further.
Mr. Doug.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion?
Mr. Goss. Mr. Chairman. Just want everybody to know that I'm part of OES, and I would like to do a shout-out to Ms. Lindsey Stevens. She's been working with us on this. She's been phenomenal, getting everything put together, getting everything submitted on a timely basis, so she's, like I said, couldn't ask for any more help than what that young man did. Made your ass ever come to help on these grants.
All right, thank you, sir. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Call vote. Oh two twenty-three eighteen passes. All right, resolution oh two twenty-three nineteen, a resolution making appropriations of nonprofit charitable organization of Wrong County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-three. Motion by Wilson, second by Mr. Hook. Mr. Wilson.
So this is giving an eight thousand dollar increase into our nonprofit, so our, the value of the penny for the county is one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We value and set our budget at ninety-five percent, which is one thirty-eight, so it's an increase, we're just basically making a true penny out of this to give a full amount into the nonprofit. So it's an eight thousand dollar increase, which benefits the county. Nothing further.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hook.
Nothing further.
All right, any discussion? Ms. Cunningham.
As director of one of the nonprofits, I should abstain.
No, you don't have to abstain because the money's not going directly to you, but you have to announce that you are the director and have an indirect conflict.
End of vote, Ms. Cunningham.
She's announced it.
Anybody else? Okay, Mr. Parks.
So I was just wondering, like, some of them, it seems like, request an extraordinary amount of money, hoping to get as much as they can. So I don't know if it should be an application process or in the committee. The committee's done a pretty good job of fielding through some of them, but it's not fair to some of these other organizations that don't request as much or request what they need, and they get cut, whereas you got some of them requesting an astronomical amount of money, which is unrealistic, but they do that so they can get more. You see what I'm saying? So like, to me, it's not fair. I don't know how you, if it should be an application process or what, where it's project, you know, like for a certain project or something, where they have to put what they're using the money for with a dollar number, and either you miss that dollar number or up or down or whatever, even if they get more this year and they don't get enough next year, whereas, to me, it'd be better than the operation we have now, when you got people asking for a quarter of the penny, you know, and they're just hoping to fall somewhere in the middle. It's non-negotiation. So that's just my thought on moving forward, I'd like to say.
Can you hear if I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Let me go on over here, and then I'll come back to you, sir. You did have the motion. Mr. Brackett. Might yield to him. You can't yield, and he may answer my question.
Yeah, so basically, we have an application process, and to me, it's probably one of the fair methods that we have, and it goes before the committee, and we put it in the paper. We also, we put it out there as much as possible for everyone to be able to come and request funds. We also look at what they provide back into the county, so that's kind of where some of that goes, such as Wrong County Rescue Squad, Mideast, the agricultural, the, I mean, it goes, there's a whole list, but we also look at return that comes back of what they're doing, providing a service. So we try to be as fair after serving on that committee, and you have a valid question, and it looks like some people are just getting a whole lot, and there was one where they're just, they'll come in and say, we're requesting thirty-five hundred dollars to repair windows, you know, in our facility that's a nonprofit or something such as that, and we look at that and are able to do that. They don't request a whole bunch to, and it may be a museum, could be whatever, so we look at what benefits most citizens of the county that move forward. That's kind of how we go about it.
All right, Mr. Brackett.
I guess, you know, with that being said, so there is, we can't tell them how to spend the money, right? We can't dictate really what they do with it. They ask for it.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I mean, they come before the committee, or most of them just submit. Very few actually come.
Right. I don't know. I guess the only hard, hard thing on the sheet is we take some money away from the hundred yards, you know, and I don't know how that happens, how we do it, but I'm not saying one's over another, but something like that, to me, I just, I don't understand.
And it also fell into timeframe, Commissioner Brackett. I think during that timeframe, when we were coming out of COVID year, we were looking to fund more of the senior citizens, and the car rides, the F run, am I not correct, Mr. Henderson? And it was due to that timeframe, so we took, our guards are very valid, something that you want to have, but in the same instance, we were trying to meet the needs of the citizens of the county with those same funds that were struggling in that area, and that is why that happened the way it happened.
Just note it, because I was trying to figure out that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gann.
Yeah, so, and please help me if I'm wrong, but the rescue squad is pretty much a mandatory that we, given that it's part of the budget. Can you help us explain that?
There's been a point of discussion today that we walked through about how the rescue squad came to be funded through nonprofit committee. In fact, we're actually exploring how to approach that through the budget process, maybe a little differently the coming year, but really, this is falling back on past practice. It's the way this is handled, and Mr., you're on that committee too, so, and this is really just falling back on what we've always done, but I did take, I want to take this opportunity to come address Mr. Brackett's question, too, is we go through an application process that, and on that application, the nonprofits are required to say what they would spend their money on, whether it be a project or whether it be on operations, but what we're doing, not in sense, but really literally, is we're making a contribution, a designated contribution, and our contribution is designated for the purpose that they list on that application. Per IRS rules, any designated contribution has to be used by that organization per the restrictions in that designation, can't be used for anything else. Now, that's between them and the IRS, but that's kind of the unwritten side of what's on here. We asked them to provide an annual report to show that they did what they said they were going to do with the money that we gave them, and that's kind of the extent of our compliance that we're able to enforce, but, you know, we try to go back to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do, and, but there's no callback, and as Commissioner Parks and I were talking about this today, if we give a contribution to somebody, there's no callback provision where if they don't do it, we get that money back, but it will inform you, the committee, next year on if they apply, we'll definitely take that into consideration. Is that, for those that are on the committee, is that?
Yes. So with these, and so there's one on here, corn silk ties is horrible. So when they came in, we didn't know it. I mean, we did not know them, and so in the beginning, we really weren't going to help them, until we asked them, can you explain it? And so with corn silk ties, is what they are doing is they are remodeling or, what would you say the word? Not remodeling, but.
Restoring.
Restoring the oldest church in Haverhill, and the church is going to be used for the community. They're going to be able to have drug classes there, the community to use it for different things, and so every one of these individuals, every one of these organizations, they actually contribute back to the betterment of Wrong County, and until you actually listen to them or you read them and understand them, it is very challenging. And what's really hard is when you get somebody asking for twenty-five thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars, and the process is, you should have four or five people on the committee, and every person kind of goes through there and figures out what they think they should have, and then you just sit and talk about that, and it goes back and forth until you get those numbers down, because you only have a certain amount of money, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to be divided amongst these, and so one of the things that you really look for is what they're contributing back to the community. And even when you do that, every one of these organizations somehow contribute to the betterment of the community, and they provide a service for the residents of the county. So it is a hard one, it's a hard challenge, and Ron Berry made a statement, and I really appreciate what he said, he said, this is the only time that the county can do something and give back to the community, and we can feel good about it, you know, because, but what they're doing is, is what we give is just a drop in reality of what they give. You know, they're giving their time and their investment and their money to put into this also, and what we give is just a small amount, but each and every one of these people, even like with the Auburn Springs Historical Society, you know, it's their history, it's what it is, it's, you know, it's Auburn Springs, and they're saving their history and who they were and their heritage, and for that part of the county, that's very important, and it's that way with all the others, so I understand it's a huge challenge, and I would invite, if you're not on that committee, I would invite you to come, and say that, listen, and to what people are doing in their community, it's a great reward just to get to see what folks are doing in our community, so if you're not part of it, come out and be part of it.
Mr. Goss.
Commissioner Wilson and Gann both hit it a lot. I've never sat on something, on anything, that was so hard to make decisions on, to know that you could cut somebody here, maybe like the agent or something, or you're going to take a, you know, a food plate away from an agent, you know, elderly person or something, or, you know, this one needs it or that. It's something Mr. Gann said about the corn silk ties, that's going to be a community, you know, it's going to be, you know, it's not just going to be for one area. The Kingston Heritage, yep, they got their amount, but you know, we got to step back and look too, you know? They store the records over and stuff, you know, so, you know, if they're helping the county in one way, you know, we've got to help them back. Guys, I'm telling you, I'm not, I'm not, Commissioner Gann, until you set on it, it's hard, and I'd like to add three hundred thousand dollars to give, you know, give back, but that's all I've got to say, sir.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, call vote. Oh two twenty-three nineteen passes. Then resolution oh two twenty-three dash twenty to add to the Wrong County of Employee Handbook under paid time off. I hear a motion. Motion by Wilson. Second by Hook. Mr. Wilson.
I think on this one, I want to defer to Audrey.
Defer to whom, sir?
Audrey.
Down here.
So this is employee handbook of paid time off?
Yes, we reassessed on how the employees earn vacation. Currently, a person comes in, they work for five years, and they get an increase, or from one to five years, they get to earn four, or what, two and a half days per month. It's ten years before there's any adjustments. Normally, you can see in any other corporations, every five years, you're awarded a point five per, you know, month to an employee, so we wanted to change that up. Currently, also, we are limited at eighteen hours. We have several of our employees that have met those matches of the caps, and when they meet those caps, they do not earn any sick time or the vacation time, they'll lose it. So we are trying to make it fair for everybody that works and kind of reward those that have worked here between five and ten years, and even, you know, to give everybody a maximum of four-week paid vacation.
All right, Mr. Hook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wholeheartedly recommend this, you know, it's been, and I've been on the commission a long time, you know, we can't, we can't compete every time with coverage on their salaries, so we have to look at other ways to make it fair for our employees and the benefits that our employees have, and sometimes you can realize a benefit more than you can nip along the hour. Benefit never goes away, and we have all, I'm now retired, but we have all been through this process, needing more benefits, more benefits, so I wholeheartedly support this. It's not enough. I think we need to go back, and I think we need to really look at the overall benefit package and plan to our employees, how we're going to handle them, how we're going to keep them once we pay them, because I don't want, and nothing is food stamps, I don't want our employees in food stamps. They serve us what's the most dear to us, and that's Wrong County. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hook. Right, Mr. Goss.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I want to thank Connie, Lori, Jennifer, I sat in on this meeting. It's really, it's surreal how much work and how they put into this, and I appreciate their effort. I want to let it be known again, I do work for OES, and Mr. Leview, since I'm actually directly benefiting, do I need to abstain or just?
Just. Just announce that you're a county employee.
I'm making this statement.
You and Doug can donate your vacation time to my.
Mr. Gann.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is not on this resolution, but I just want to thank everyone who came out tonight. I appreciate, and I know that I speak for the commission, when you look back and you see that folks are sitting in seats, I know this is not where you want to always spend a Monday night, but we, as commission, appreciate that you come out and be involved in the local government. We're your representatives, each and every one of us here, we're elected officials, and we represent you, and hopefully we represent you to the best that we can do, but we thank you for coming out, and I wish that you continue to come out, be involved in local government. I think that some of yous may have seen tonight that you made a difference by coming out. Your voice always matters, so please always use that voice in government, and we thank you. That's all I have to say.
So you don't have a vote?
No, that's all I want to say, sir, Doug.
All right, any other discussion on oh two two-three two-zero? All right. Hearing none. Call vote. Well, I mean, I bet you can't. All right. Any other business come from legislative body? Hearing none. Motion to adjourn. No, Mr. Wilson. Parks. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah.
No. What do you think? You need to say.
Yeah, I have something, sir.
Have a good one. Thank you. Thank you.